I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the principle of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Roll call, please.
President Rudd?
Here.
Pro Tem Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Cam Peroni?
Here.
Councilmember Lamb?
Here.
Councilmember Mosher?
Here.
Councilmember Dan D'Elitis?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. And for presentations, we have none. Item number five, call to the public. Each person wishing to address the village council should be afforded an opportunity to do so. If you wish to comment, please stand or raise a hand to indicate you wish to speak. When recognized, give your name and address and direct your comments to the chair. Comments are limited to four minutes. Yes, please.
Can I get the document to you guys first, please?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so my name is Mary Briers. I'm at 592 Long Point Drive. The document I gave you, I just, I found it and I've read it. It's a four-page document. It was in January. And I just, I'm reaching out to you guys because I kind of have a little bit of clarity on this document. So it's a, I guess, investigation on publicly owned property and right-of-way inventory project. And it has to do with my street, Long Point Drive, as well as some pump stations and our field at the end of our street. I noticed that you guys hired McKenna. Total cost so far, estimated cost for $15,000. And I see that there was a public hearing for April, an engagement. But I was, I didn't really see a public hearing in April. And I went back to the meeting minutes from the village council, and I didn't see any public hearing in regards to this topic. So I just kind of, I mean, if you guys can enlighten me on what this project is and what is trying to be implemented, because in the, in the end, it says draft implementation plan, final implementation plan for council review, council authorization for implementation. What is this?
So normally during public comments, we don't engage with dialogue. So I would ask you to connect with the administration, just to get clarity on the process. And then feel free to email or reach out to any one of us as well, too. We'd be happy to sit down and talk with you or answer questions as well.
I mean, can this be put as a, as a topic in the next meeting or something like that? I mean, because it does say on here, public hearing. I mean, is there going to be a public hearing on this, this situation? Because the public hearing was not done in April, or was there a public hearing done in April? Because I did not see a public hearing done in April on this topic.
So that's why I would ask you to connect with administration about timeline on things?
What do you mean administration? Darwin?
So, yes, Mr. McClary's office.
Okay, Darwin, I will be reaching out to you on this, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Gibb?
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. Matthew Gibb, 118 North Broadway. I would ask that the council consider adding an agenda item tonight. We have commenced a very good contract that all of you were instrumentally helpful with in the DDA's relationship with our police department and our excellent new chief regarding code enforcement. So one of the things that has gone on collaboratively is looking at sandwich board signs and temporary signs and political signs, all kinds of signs, all over the village, but as it might impact the DDA. So the chief and I have met several times, and we've discussed kind of the process and the protocol of moving things forward. His department has very lawfully issued notices to, I can't, I don't know if it's 17 or 19 businesses, regardless, in the downtown area. And it's raised a lot of questions from businesses that have had these signs for a long time, and including those that have some unique circumstances. I'll give one example, Cookies and Cream and the coffee shop, We Bean, that's behind there. They have no visibility. You don't know that there's an ice cream shop tucked way back in behind there unless Cookies and Cream puts out those signs. So we've raised these questions. The chief and I have talked quite extensively on how do we go forward. I'm coming here, Madam President, to say it might be worth this council having a brief discussion. The request from the DDA would be, and I think the chief is amenable, to delaying some of the enforcement that was in the notice, which would be this Friday, to allow us an opportunity to collaboratively look at, should our sign ordinance be looked at, not as an overhaul, but just as it pertains to some of these temporary issues and signage issues that pertain to the businesses. So my request at this public comment and your next agenda item for approval agenda, if anyone's interested, the DDA would support a brief agenda item tonight to see if there is a solution that we can all work on together.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on a non-agenda item? All right, seeing none, move on to item number six, approval of the agenda by order of the president. No matters will be discussed after 9:30 PM unless the council votes to continue the meeting. Yes, Mr. Dan D'Elitis?
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, but I'd like to add two items, actually. So I agree with Mr. Gibb. I think we should talk about that one. And I'm in support of putting a committee together to talk about the sign ordinance. The second one that I would like to add is, in our special meeting two weeks ago, July 28th, on village office hours, there was the, one of the minutes stated that we were going to set a work, the next work group session in this, in this council meeting. And I don't see that on the agenda, so I'd like to add that to the agenda so that we can schedule that work group meeting.
And additionally, if you wouldn't mind me adding on to yours, from our work session earlier, a discussion about a continued committee for the cityhood investigation.
So amend, amend my motion to approve that.
And then I'll support that. So we will add item number 10D, would be the sign ordinance, 10E, work group session, and then item F, committee on cityhood, if it passes. Yes?
Motion is for, so the sandwich board issue, I did not hear the important part of that discussion was that administration, who was in charge of enforcing our ordinances, which would be just to clear, had, you know, he should be carrying that to us, not something that important should be in the administration, unable to add any agenda item.
I'm fine with that. Just have that conversation.
Okay.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So item number seven, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are approved by one vote. We have item seven, A, approval of village council regular meeting minutes of July 28, 2025. B, approval of village council special meeting minutes of July 28, 2025. C, receive and file a planning commission regular meeting minutes, May 5, 2025. D, receive and file a planning commission special meeting minutes, June 18, 2025. E, receive and file correspondence from Corey Johnston dated July 27, 2025. F, receive and file invoice distribution report for August 12, 2025. G, receive and file financial statements, July 2025. H, receive and file investment report, June 2025. And I, receive and file July 2025 police department activity report. Counsel?
I'd like to remove my, was, E, and I'm trying to apply for this comment on the questions of the chief.
Would that be a motion?
I get it.
Oh.
I'd like to pull down item A, the village council regular meeting minutes of July 28th. For a comment, please.
Well, then I'll move to approve the consent agenda with item A, E, and I, to be discussed immediately after. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So item, would be eight, A, then, approval of village council regular meeting minutes of July 28, 2025. Mr. Dan D'Elitis?
I just want to make a comment and I think a request also. I attended the township board meeting or trustee meeting on Monday where the intergovernmental agreement was, was spoken about and agreed to. One of the things that came up in that discussion was, there's an area in the cemetery, in our cemetery, that is, that doesn't have any grass on it. It's got, you know, raw dirt and whatnot. And I believe we use it for turnaround space, and I'm not sure what all else. The comment was made in the trustees meeting that there's a concern that runoff from the cemetery, and it's, you know, the grave is downhill, and runoff picks up dirt and basically takes it into that retention pond. There's a special assessment district, a SAD, that is, that's part of this whole thing now, where the residents of that subdivision are going to, are going to foot the bill for $460, something thousand dollars to redo that retention pond and whatnot. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that we've got this area that is out there as a, I'm going to say contentious point, and, and the potential for filling that retention pond with, with dirt and whatnot. I know in my conversation, my email with, with Wes and Darwin today, we're aware of that. My understanding is that our village engineer has looked at that. So my request was going to be, can we get a report from the engineer? Maybe there was something that the engineer put together that we could see. I just, I'd like to make sure that there's awareness of this potential issue, because I think it's down the road. It's likely, it's likely that we could end up with some, some kind of liability there. And I'd like to understand that and make sure that we're not exposing ourselves to any liability.
Mr. Dan?
I came to the party very, very early, I was issued, George, and I've been to that site several times in the last six months.
Your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Forgive me. Anyway, I came to this party very early, and I've been to that site most recently, a couple of days ago, and then lastly, six months ago, walked the entire site. The village maintains a vegetative buffer between the subdivision and the cemetery. The cemetery is undeveloped on the section abutting the, abutting the subdivision. They put excess dirt there from the graves, and they grate, and they store stuff there and whatnot. And I walked out, and the village attorney's been very clear about our responsibilities. We have no responsibilities to the township, or the subdivision, or the drainage facility. With that being said, so, we've addressed our end of the issues, and the DPW has been maintaining the site. And my understanding is, we are allowing the township's contractor to use our cemetery and disturbing our resting residents to save approximately half a million dollars for that project. So they're going to save half a million dollars, apparently.
It's actually $100,000.
A hundred, well, okay, a hundred, $100, whatever. They're going to save $100,000 by using our cemetery. That's great. I think that's win-win cooperation right there. So we, I think that staff has already addressed this in great detail, and I don't think we need to do anything more or be involved in it.
And I appreciate your comments, and I respect your comments. And I think what you just stated is all around our current situation. And I think the concern is that in the future, they're going, they're going to get this all taken care of, $460, something thousand dollars. And there's a future, there's a potential of future liability. And I understand what you're saying. All I'm asking is, if the engineers looked at this, if nothing more, send it to me. If, if everybody else doesn't, doesn't have an interest. I would like to know that we're, we're covered down the road.
I think, George, that the way we're covered is they grow grass on the dirt between the cemetery and the subdivision, and the DPW isn't having a practice of letting the dirt go down the hill. So there's nothing needs to be done. They're just doing their normal, everyday.
And I was at the township meeting, and I heard the comments that were made in the discussion in the meeting. I spoke with the township engineer afterwards.
Are you, are you a township representative? The village?
We already decided this issue. Let it, let it go.
Does our DPW or our administration have anything from our engineers?
I have a, a report of finding from the engineer that, that indicated that we, our property is not contributing to the silt issue on top, the subdivision property.
Is that something you would like to see?
I'd like to see it.
Would?
And the engineers have looked at this several times. Our attorney has looked at this issue several times, and, and I follow their advice when I make decisions on how to proceed.
Would you be willing to send that on to the council, just so we can see that?
I would be happy to send the document on to the council.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll move to approve the, the regular meeting minutes of July 28, 2025.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, well, eight, then, now, eight B, receive and file correspondence from Corey Johnston dated July 27, 2025. Mr. Lamb?
This is our practice. I want to acknowledge Mr. Johnson's letters. I read all of his letters, received numerous letters. Mr. Johnson makes a lot of allegations and assertions that the DDA is not conducting themselves properly with their construction practices at the, at the lumberyard site. I've spoken with the, the DDA director. He has indicated that they are not actively construction at this time. They are trying to stabilize the site, maintain the buildings from further deterioration, and taking the minimum steps necessary to do that. And this has been done in conjunction with support from the township building department. So I would like to thank Mr. Johnson for bringing up all his concerns. I share every one of them with him. And I'm anxiously looking forward to positively the, the forthcoming site plan and, and project plans for the future of the lumberyard. So, thank you.
Do we have a motion to receive?
Motion to receive and file correspondence from Corey Johnston dated July 27, 2025.
Support.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then item eight C, receive and file July 2025 police department activity report. Mr. Lamb?
I just wanted an opportunity to ask a question of the chief.
Or was that you?
Has there been any increase in issues in the safety of the community with the construction of the Mosheri sites and the ongoing lumberyard project? Or have things remained stable and?
I'm not sure your question.
Is there any, are there any problems, police safety?
The things that have been related, and I'll, I'll put this out there, is, we have a very successful business that opened up on 24, the waterfront social. It's a phenomenal business, but we do have people that continually are going back and forth across 24, which are jaywalking. We've had two close encounters with pedestrians, and we've stepped up our enforcement efforts on that stretch of highway from Atwater. And I want to encourage the community that there's three crosswalks that need to be used. One at Atwater, the main one behind the Legion Club, and then also up to Flint to cross 24. And we, we are issuing tickets on that on a regular basis, and we're going to continue to do so.
So, so pedestrian safety is becoming more of a concern on M24 with more activity in the previous dormant properties?
Correct.
Adjoining the lake. So I'm, I'm anticipating that there will be additional police services needed in the future with hundreds and hundreds of new residents on the other side of M24. So that's, that's my comment and my question. Thank you.
You have a motion to receive and file?
Motion to receive and file the July 20, 25 police department activity report.
Support.
Great, we have a motion in support. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearings, we have none. So item 10A, accept council member resignation, Carl Sarowski, Mr. McClary.
Your honor, members of council, you're being requested to take three actions tonight. The first is to accept council member Carol Sarowski's resignation from the village council effective July 28. The second would be to authorize the publication of the vacancy in that position, provide the necessary notice, and to schedule interviews if that's how council wants to proceed with filling the vacant position. And the third would be to schedule a special meeting for candidate interviews.
Counsel?
I move to accept the resignation of Carl Sarowski.
Support.
We have a motion in support. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I can make the second motion. I'll make the motion to publish a vacancy notice and schedule interviews, to authorize Clerk Treasurer Stout to publish the council member vacancy notice on the village website, in village hall, and into Lake Orion Review on August 20th, 2025.
Support.
We have a motion in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make the third motion, motion to schedule a special meeting for candidate interviews. So, Mr. McClary, how would you like us to? It's kind of open. Just pick a date? When are you going to be in, out of town?
I, I am going to be out of town starting next week.
So, do we have a?
This process will take place during my absence.
How exciting. Is that going to be? Who is going to be the acting director at that time?
Administration has no involvement in this process.
Do you have a recommended, Teresa, do you have any?
It would just be for us to decide, you know. So the intent would be to make the appointment at the regular meeting of September 8th. We could do interviews before that. We could do the week before that. I don't know. The 25th would be our next regular scheduled meeting, but it will only have been posted on August 20th, so I don't feel like that's enough time when it comes out on Thursday to do it on Monday. So.
So can we leave this open? Can we make the motion to schedule a special meeting upon receipt?
You know, I, it, I think I'd like to have a date in there, so that way it can be published when we're going to do that.
Well, I'm, I'm in town for the, till then, till September.
We could do, I mean, there's a planning commission, would be September 1st. We could do it before the planning commission meeting that Monday. Or we could choose another day of the week as well. But I would be inclined to do it that week, the week before.
And I think it's actually Tuesday, because that Monday, the first is Labor Day.
Yeah, you're right.
Fine with me. I'm okay with that date. I'm with George. I'm good. Stay in.
The second you said?
Yeah.
I'm good.
And we could schedule it for 5:30 unless we get, you know, you know, 20 applications, and then we might have to move it up to 4:30 or schedule a second day as well. So, bye.
You're going to make it for 4:30, and then we can back off if we?
Does anyone have a problem with 4:30?
Was that Monday?
That would be Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday. Yeah.
I will double check.
That's fine. I'm okay with that.
Okay, interview scheduled, scheduled special meeting on September 2nd at 4:30 AM.
PM.
PM. For the purpose of interviewing applicants for the vacant council member position, with the intent of making an appointment at the regular council meeting on September 8th, 2025, at 6:30 PM.
I'll support. Any council discussion on that? Any public comment? Seeing none, we have a motion and a support. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10B, proposed 2025, 20 to 2031 capital improvement plan. Mr. McClary?
Your honor, members of council, you are being requested to adopt the 2025 through 2031 capital improvement plan for the village. The plan was presented to the planning, planning commission at their August 4th meeting, and the planning commission recommended adoption. I would note that there's been one change to the proposed capital improvement plan, and that was changing the dollar amount for the Atwater Park basketball replacement, basketball court replacement project from the $40,000 to $84,000. That's based on the revised cost estimates from the engineer for a junior varsity-sized basketball court. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee will be discussing this project at their next meeting and making a final recommendation on the project. So that number may come down from, from the $84,000. But, but at this point, I recommend incorporating the $84,000 into the CIP.
I?
Mr. Lamb?
Since we haven't approved the $84,000, it's still heavily under discussion. I move to approve the 2025-2023 Village Lake Orion Capital Improvement Plan without the revision to the basketball court. We can revise the CIP plan if we approve the $84,000 at our regular meeting.
I support. We have a motion in support. Any further comments?
No, we can always change it.
So, so you got two things from me. So realistically, it's, it's making a change in the budget. Should we decide to do this? It's making a change in the budget that's really probably more important than a change in the CIP? If we did, you know, if we do. It is, adopting the CIP, whatever dollar figure you put into that, you're not changing the budget at all. Right. But I, because I, I support what Michael's saying, because I don't think, especially discussion, based on the discussion in the last meeting, I don't think $85,000 was going to fly.
No.
So it just seems to me that when we know, and plus, the, the proposal that was brought forth two weeks ago really wasn't what the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee was asking for. So I think we need to get all that sorted out before we make a change to the CIP. And what I was getting at was, I think, if we decide it's something other than the $40,000, then it's really a budget amendment that really makes it happen, not a CIP change. So I, I agree with, with what Michael's saying. I do have a second point on the CIP, and this, this is more of a question. At our January 15th special meeting on the CIP, Pro Tem Ford, and I'm reading the minutes, Pro Tem Ford suggested providing a yearly projection to the public, offering a more accurate forecast of water and sewer rates, and explaining the factors that could cause fluctuations. And then there was discussion around creating a webpage and whatnot. So that was back in January. The meeting that, the public hearing that we had on the water and sewer rates, I think that was a comment that came up from the public more than once about, okay, so this is what's happening this year, what's happening the next year, and the next year. I think that kind of follows along with what Pro Tem Ford was suggesting at that point. So my question is, what had, what's happened? Are we, are we doing anything with those projections? Did we do anything on the website? Is there a plan to do that? Well, I, if I recall correctly, when we had those discussions and that idea did come up, we had a discussion on the fact that it's hard to project from one year to the next. We've got a number of things going on with water and sewer, especially on the sewer side right now. We've got the sanitary sewer pump station improvement project, which is somewhere between $11 million, $14 million. We've got a number of developments that are going to be coming online over the next two to three years, and a number of users coming online, so that changes the projections. It's very hard, it's very hard to project at this point with, with a number of items that are in flux. And I think that was part of the discussion that we had at that time. I do agree that once, once we are in a more stable state, we've got the developments completed, the projections would be easier for us to do. And we could do maybe a three-year projection of water and sewer rates. I definitely would like to get to that point. But with the, with the developments that we have right now, depending on when they come online, it's hard to say what next, project what next year's rate is going to be, or two years from now, what the rate is going to be. But, but that is a goal that I think we should strive for. And I recall the discussion about it being hard. I definitely recall that discussion. It is. But that's, I'm just, I'm going off what the minute said and, and what I remember about the commitment, we were going to do that. And I recognize it was hard, and we had all that discussion, but that didn't mean we weren't going to do it. It just meant it was going to be hard. So I'm just asking for an update. Looking, I'm looking for something that's, I guess, sooner than a couple of years from now. Yeah, I also expressed concerns at that time about coming up with projections that, that may not be accurate, and the public relying on those numbers, and then when they change, you know, the, the public being upset with us because they've changed. They were clearly upset with us at the public hearing. We weren't able to tell them anything. I, I'd rather they're upset with us because they've changed. I'd rather they're upset with us because of good numbers than upset with us because of bad numbers.
Do we have anything on our website that just explains, like, not maybe super granular about how water and sewer rates are calculated? I was trying to look the Wi-Fi isn't connected on the computer.
I don't recall that we have that on our water and sewer pages, but we can definitely-
Yeah, because I'm wondering if that might be something, in the meantime, even if we don't have all the projections, like, here's how they're calculated, you know, kind of an overview.
To go back to that, one of the major calculations is the budget, and we don't know the budget numbers till, like, February, March, the preliminary, just so we can start dialing stuff in.
But it would be good to provide an explanation as to the water and sewer rate models that we use. They're very detailed and very granular, so a lot of factors go into it, and I think it would be something interesting for a lot of people to know that these are not just numbers that we pull out of the air, that there's a lot of calculations and a lot of pieces that come into play to consider, and numbers that go into that rate model, and it is a computerized rate model that we use.
Yeah, so something like that could be helpful as a starting point in public awareness and education.
Mr. Lamb and then Mr. Ford.
Yeah, sorry, my first comment's about the, I got thrown off track by the basketball court issue, but my main issue with the capital improvement plan is it says in the financial impact, the draft capital improvement plan identifies $26 million in capital needs for the village over the next years, six years, to be funded from a variety of sources. I always take offense to that kind of language. They're to be funded by special assessments and user fees and user rates. So, it should be clear to the people that you are going to pay. Okay, we don't have $26 million. We have to borrow the $26 million, and we have to pay for it. So, yes, your rates are going up, and then you're going to get a special assessment for your street paving. It looks like I may be one of the lucky ones with, to get their street paving assessment first out of the new CIP. How exciting is that, huh? So, I'm going to say once again, the, I'm going to vote to approve the capital improvement plan, because we've never had one, and this is a major step forward and a great success for the community, but it's not funded. It's funded by default through the village's policy of charging the people for any new charges. I still am going to plead to the council and to the manager to look at the tax revenues in this village and see if they should be directed to benefit the people. If maybe some of your existing taxes should be used to pay some of these sewer and water bonds, okay? I mean, that, we have a huge taxes, and they keep increasing, and we're going to have a big windfall from the new projects, and I'd like to see that money directed to pay for your sewer bonds, and that discussion should come forth. Thank you.
Mr. Ford?
Yes, getting back to what Mr. Dandlede is saying and what you've said about explanation on the website for the water bills, and while it's hard to predict what they're going to be, but, and, but I also think that we can add to that explanation, the reasons. I mean, it's going to change just because of numbers, because when the new developments come online, so that that's out there also, so people can look at it that way. Thank you.
Now, the council comments on the CIP?
I was just going to say, so one of the biggest factors in what's changed the CIP are the grants that we were expecting to receive. So, last year didn't come through as we hoped. This year, we're getting, I think, zero is the answer this year, because our project wasn't even taken forward. And I don't know what will happen next year, but that's a big hitter on our sewer pump station.
Any public comments on the CIP? Seeing none, we have a motion and support. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10C, change in Oakland County dog license program, Mr. McClary.
Your Honor, council is being requested to authorize the village manager to provide noticed Oakland County animal shelter of the village's intent to discontinue the sale of dog licenses at village offices and to direct out customers to the DocuPet website, which is the county's new online system. The county, Oakland County is making changes to its dog licensing program by entering into an agreement with DocuPet to manage the sales of dog licenses. Currently, we sell dog licenses for the county, and we receive $2 for each license sold. Village staff must prepare a monthly report of licenses sold and remit the license fees to the county. The county provides the village with the license tags and to distribute when we sell the licenses. Under the new program, the county will no longer distribute license tags to issuing municipalities. Instead, licenses will be purchased through the DocuPet web portal, and tags will be mailed to the pet owners. And that will happen regardless of whether they would come to our office to purchase the licenses or purchase them online. We would no longer distribute the actual tags. So, it doesn't really make sense for us to remain in this program. I would argue that we lose money on this. We don't, we definitely don't make any money at $2. It doesn't cover our costs. We're not in the business of making money, but it doesn't cover our cost to manage the program. We, I believe, all of 2024, we received $98 for the work that we do on this program. So, now is a good opportunity for us to get out of the program and to refer people to the website to purchase their licenses.
Mr. Dandlede?
So, I'll make the motion, as stated here, to authorize the village manager to provide notice Oakland County animal shelter, and the village is intent to discontinue the sale of dog licenses at village offices and to direct customers wishing to purchase dog licenses to the website as the county's new dog license issuer.
Support with a comment? We can get that obviously put on our website for people to see the change, so they don't have to come in and then find out?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Darwin, what are the, what's the purpose of getting a dog license?
You have to have a license to prove that your dog has received the required vaccinations, mainly. That's the reason for the licenses.
And do our ordinances require you to have a license? Clerk is shaking her head, yes.
I believe so.
I think, I think the county and the state require, I don't want to say state, the county requires dogs to be licensed.
So, who am I calling when I'm going to rat my neighbor out for the unlicensed dog? Who will be contacted? The police?
You would contact County Animal Shelter.
Okay, so the county will take over the complaints and the jurisdiction and stuff like that?
Well, they've always, they've always done that. We just issued the licenses.
Okay, so we, okay, so it's really-
We don't do the-
So, it won't affect us at all?
We do enforcement, unless we have an incident where someone had bitten, and then-
Madam President, so to answer your question, this is just for the licensing and registration of the animals, which has nothing to do with our purview. What will continue to remain with absolutely no change, if we have any ordinances specific to dogs, that you would call, just like you normally, and our code enforcement would handle it, such as too many dogs and cats on the property, such as barking dog complaints. That is stuff that our code enforcement will still handle. This right here is just for the registration of the dog, which is well beyond our scope.
So, in the past, our dogs always had licenses, and we had county people come to the door and knock on the door to see if there was a dog barking, and then they would ask for proof of the license. So, I'm assuming the county is still going to do this as part of their program, at my guess.
That, my understanding is that nothing is changing in terms of the overview and enforcement by the county, it's just that they are changing the way that licenses are issued.
Well, I hope people continue to do the licenses. I've always done them for my dogs, and I think it's really important when you have an incident, which I did have once. I had a woman stalking me, and as I was walking my dog, but it, I hope that that's going to continue, that this is just, you know, a paperwork thing, and I don't think we need to do it. I think the county should do it, but I'm hoping they're going to continue checking to make sure that the dogs are licensed, is all I have to say on that.
Well, I'm sure there are more than 48 dogs in-
Yes.
Lake Orion, so I'm assuming they're going to the county for their license.
Not everybody does the licenses. I follow the rules.
Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10D, discussion about the sign ordinance. Mr. McClary, I guess I defer to Mr. Gibb to let us know what, or would you like to comment first?
I would like to just make an initial comment that Councilmember Lamb is correct, that enforcement of the ordinances is an administrative matter, not a council matter under the village charter. If the council wants to discuss and hear from Mr. Gibb in more detail about why there may need to be changes to the sign ordinance, that is completely within the purview of the council, and I'm sure the council would welcome that conversation.
So, no doubt, I'd like to hear from Mr. Gibb just what exactly what we're looking for, because I didn't hear if, like, you want a moratorium on the sign ordinance? Do you want a commit, yeah, just like-
No, I just to argue, I-
Yeah.
This should be brought forward, these kind of political discussions, the very political topic, business owners want something that's not allowed. This should all be presented formally through administration, Mr. Gibb.
If I can make a point of order, ma'am, I withdraw it. This was trying to be done administratively in the absence of zero planning staff, nobody to come talk to, the village manager's going out of town for a month, Mr. Dandlede's wanted to bring it up, so I don't care. So, I don't want it politicized for Mr. Lamb. So, this statement changes everything that Mark and I talked about in the last week, and I don't want anything to do with it then, so we'll figure it out. It's very frustrating.
Mr. Dandlede? So, if I can, if I can comment, so, over the weekend, I was contacted by one of our downtown business owners, and before I followed up with that business owner, I wanted to try and find out what was happening, so Police Chief and I traded emails over the weekend. I went and visited the business owner on Monday and got a better understanding of what was happening, then I came back and talked to our police chief to get even a better understanding, and so from my perspective, we've got, we've got a sign ordinance that we have, we started to take some action on, and that's the role of our ordinance enforcement is to act on the ordinances. I believe that there, you know, after talking to the business owner, after talking to the police chief, I believe there's opportunity to take another look at that sign ordinance and perhaps make it, bring it up to date, let's say, make it more fair, make it easier to administer and to enforce. So, I think there's opportunity there. And so, the way I left it with the business owner was, my recommendation was for the business owner and to get together with a couple of other business owners and come at the public, you know, the public comments section of tonight's meeting, state, you know, the concern, and that we, council, would then decide whether we wanted to take any further action, okay? Subsequent to that, I was told by the business owner that either Matt or Janet was going to make that pitch, and so that's how Matt ended up here, really speaking for the business owner, and there were seven, I only spoke, I only, I was only contacted by one business owner. I understand that there were other business owners and, you know, that had similar concerns. I think what the, what our ordinance enforcement did, I think, was really proactive. There were no citations, there were complaints, and the police chief was very specific in his correspondence to me over the weekend about the number of complaints and the number of people that made those complaints. He was very specific about the specific signs that were complained about. The police notified those business owners of the complaint, and then I think there was a follow-up of all of the business owners with a, kind of an explanation of the ordinance. So, I think, I think the way it was handled from our ordinance enforcement was proactive. It certainly wasn't, you know, wasn't, I don't think it was negative in any way, but I think it, I think what it did was it showed that we've got, we've got, we've got something that can be improved. I'll just say it that way. And so, my commitment was, I said, I'd be happy to get involved in some kind of a committee and see what we can do to better that ordinance, to bring it up to date. So, that's kind of the history that I know, and if other council were notified also, or, you know, I guess I'm not sure, I'd let them speak.
I just have a question. What were the complaints about the signs?
Blocking, I think blocking the sidewalk was, I think, the main concern.
Yeah.
Okay, let me, I'll summarize it quickly. Our department code enforcement received upwards of 12 complaints, reference sign placements on the sidewalks, blocking it, blocking pedestrian walkways, and also in addition to that, potential unpermitted sign as well. We did an investigation on the unpermitted sign as well as the other signs, and the business owner of that particular sign filed for a permit and did the proper way. One of the things that I want to stress is that when we get complaints like this, it's important that we enforce them consistently across the board, that we're not targeting certain individuals ever. So, with that being said, code enforcement went out. We had four different businesses that were specifically mentioned in the complaints. However, we went to 21 businesses that have the Sandwich Board signs, provided them the information of what the current ordinance is, and also the proper way of applying for the permit, which there are permit fees, and they're only allowed for so many days for our current ordinance, which was adopted in 2018. The disconnect was in 2020, there was, because of COVID and certain things in the community, there was a pullback from enforcement on that, and although it recovered, the enforcement never covered. My concern is that now the village has been put on notice, and we have a duty to act, and we also have a duty to treat people consistently and fair. It is an administration's discretion, and my discretion specifically in this matter, of how we're going to enforce it. So, right now, it's an education, and we want the business community to get into compliance. If there is concern with the potential ordinance, I'm more than willing to, this would be more in our purview of how we're going to enforce it, the council, I don't feel, I think they'd be overstepping by trying to direct us in our discretion, but if there is positive momentum on potentially changing the ordinance, while this is playing out, we can ensure that there's no safety concerns or safety hazards with the signs, and then also continue to, as this plays out, ensure that the business owners are in compliance with how it's going to proceed. So, that's how it started.
Your Honor, if I could just add to that, there are two components here, just so that we're clear for the public as well as for the council. One is the provisions of the sign ordinance itself. If the business community feels that there are certain provisions within the ordinance that aren't working for them, that are untenable in some way, that is a conversation that the business community, Mr. Gibb, should have with the council, and the council, through your, through your legislative powers, who make whatever changes you want. And then there's the enforcement mechanism. Once the council adopts an ordinance, it is administration's responsibility to enforce that ordinance. Now, we do, as the chief pointed out, we do have some discretion, and we did use discretion in this regard. We want to educate before we actually go to citing somebody and- We want to educate before we actually go to citing somebody and levying fines. We want to make sure that the business community understands what the sign ordinance provisions are, what the process is for applying for a temporary sign permit, what have you. But we are required under the charter to enforce the ordinances. Our goal is voluntary compliance rather than ticketing people. And that's what we try to do, that's what the police department did here, try to educate the business community. But if there are concerns about what is in the ordinance, that, like I said earlier, that is a conversation that I think we all welcome.
Mr. Gordon?
Yeah, I was contacted also, and it, it seems that complaints ran in two categories. One, people complaining about the signs and their location, and two, people who had the signs complaining either about the cost or the duration of the, of the permit. If they get the permit and they can put their sign out, we still might get complaints about blocking sidewalks. So I, I don't know if we're really addressing the sidewalk issue by allowing a permit. And I think that was the, the thing I brought up to the person that complained to me. So we really have two different types of things. I'm, I'm on board with, with taking a look at the ordinance and, and seeing that the, some of the complaining people may not like the outcome of that because they're complaining in two different ways on both sides of that issue. But I'd be willing to, to be a part of that discussion.
Yeah, I would just say that I also agree that there's, there's two components. There's the enforcement, which, you know, our, an administration and department is responsible for. But yes, any changes to it or discussion with business owners, discussion with the public about these ordinances does fall under our, our purview, and would also be happy to, to take a look at that. Mr. Lamb, and then I'll go for public comment. Yes?
Yeah, so the, I have no problem with citizens coming and asking us to review an ordinance if they have issues with it, that's great. I, that's not what I heard tonight. I heard something about asking council to, to, you know, temporarily suspend or waive an ordinance or take some action. And, and, you know, the appropriate method, since the village manager is in charge of administering the village, and the village council is specifically prohibited from getting involved directly with ordinances and enforcement and the day-to-day operations of the village. Okay, yes, it's within our purview to request the village manager. So I'm basically, I'm going to make a motion to request the village manager to review the signed ordinance in line with the requests of the DPA director. That's simple enough, and then we can move on. We're all in agreement that if there's a problem with the ordinance that the citizens come forward with, we should look at it. But it's, it's not our job to tell the village manager how to write an ordinance or how to enforce an ordinance.
So we have a motion, do we have support?
Support.
Support. Did you have another? I thought, I didn't know if I saw your hand, otherwise I'll go to public comment right now.
I'm thinking here.
Okay, I'll take public comment on this.
President Matthew Gibb, DDA. So the notices that went out have enforcement effect of Friday under penalty, which is fine. It's the way the law should happen, so whatever administrative process needs to happen in the next 48 hours or so. Preemptively, to all due respect, Mr. Lamb, zero chance that happens. I would reiterate the fact, these went out on Friday afternoon, 3:00 PM. This office is closed, zero ability for any, anybody to get any type of information regarding the process. I would applaud the chief, he's done a phenomenal job of reaching out to this community question about these particular questions. But if it's an enforcement issue, you want to strictly enforce it, you can dispute your assertion. This council does have legitimate authority to direct the administrative powers of the village manager's office. I know that's a very difficult thing to do with this particular village manager. I haven't seen it over the years ever, to be honest with you. So it's a very significant question, there's an enforcement power. So we will be advising the businesses in the morning that they're to remove all signage prior to Friday morning. It's the only alternative we have.
Any other public comment?
So the question that I, the question that I would have then is, if, if we pass this motion and hand this off to Matt and Darwin, what realistically is the output of that? Because I, administration is not going to change the ordinance. I think in talking to the business owner, in talking to the police chief, talking to Matt, I think I understand what the, you know, what the, what the issues are with the ordinance. I guess Darwin, if you think there's value in the two of you looking at this and coming back with something, or if that's, I don't want to say a waste of time, but is that just? Is there any value in that?
It, it's never a waste of time to have a conversation on, on items such as this. What I would request of Mr. Gibb, if he's representing the business community, is to provide, provide information to us on what the particular concerns or issues are with the ordinance, so that we can get an understanding of what those concerns are. The chief and I can review those, we can present information back to the council for further discussion, so that the council can determine whether or not there is a need to make any changes to the ordinance. So it's, I think it can be very beneficial. But we need to have the business community or Mr. Gibb providing us with specifics on what the concerns are, not just getting up and attacking the village manager because we are doing our jobs from an administrative standpoint. We need specifics so that we can act on those. And, and that's what I would request. If we move forward with this, I think it's a good process. But, but I would ask for specific information so that we can do something productive with it.
Mr. Lamb, did you have something?
No, I'm, I'm continually offended that despite the village manager's offering to support and assist the DDA and assist the businesses and assist other people, because he does, they, you know, they cast aspersions on him because he doesn't jump the way they want him to. Well, his job is to jump the way the village charter says he's supposed to jump, unless directed by us. So I'd like the personal comments to stop. I've stopped my personal comments, and I've been supportive of all of our groups now for the last year. I still have had my criticisms, but I've kept this personal stuff to a minimum because we're all moving targets here, so we know what the protocol is. So follow the protocol. You know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, good old boy-ism is dead. So, you know, you, you can contact the village manager and make your request. And if he's not responsive to you, you can come here and make a comment. But, you know, I, I don't even know why the DDA director is here, why a village, you know, business owner isn't here, specifically the ones who received the notices, and let them come and spend some of their time in these halls and criticize our village manager. So that's my comment about this whole business.
I'm wondering if it may, might be, since it sounds like there is interest on this council of looking into this ordinance, if it may be better for members of the council to meet with some of the business owners and make a recommendation to the manager to draft or to, you know, create an ordinance or revise an ordinance based on the council's recommendations after reviewing feedback. And in part, too, because we know our managers going on a well-deserved vacation as well and should not be working during that time. And so that would give time to this council, members of this council, to begin those discussions with the community and be a little bit more proactive in not just pushing it to the administration, but also taking some, some leadership and ownership in, in those discussions for ordinances that we want our administration to enforce. Mr. Camparoni, I'll go back to public.
All right, here we go. I think we're going to open up a can of worms. We got ordinances, they're enforcing them, that's that. They're wasting everybody's time. We give them leeway on this one, guess what? You're going to have a lineup of people wanting to change the laws, all of them. We're not prepared for that. I honestly believe the business owners know what the heck they're up against, they're pushing it. Just push, 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 because that's what the business owner does, I know. But I think we're opening up a can of worms, and I think we just, I would leave, leave these fellows to do their jobs. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Stephen?
Harry Stephen, 311 North Shore. I think you've got a case of where we've had an experience of non-enforcement of ordinances. And so habits have crept in as far as what we can do and can't do. We now are moving into a realm of where we are enforcing ordinances. The first appearance appears to be signs, but there are many other ordinances within our community that have been kind of just fluffed over, that are going to be stepping up. And I believe in the new computer system that we have in the police department that there is a large queue of ordinance infractions. And now if you have an infraction, what are you going to do with it? You got to do something with them. But we've had a history for many, many years of ignoring our ordinances as they are written. And now people have got habits of doing what they do, and now we're saying, you can't do what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Rosemary, 4225 North Broadway. I'm listening to this sparring going back and forth. And in listening, I feel as though the reason Mr. Gibb came is because one of the jobs of the DDA is promote the downtown and the businesses. So I think my assumption is, I don't know this for a fact, but I believe that they came to him and asked if he would speak on their behalf, because I think a lot of businesses, when you're saying they should come here, you're right. Maybe they should come here and express that. But I also think that they have a public perception, so if they come and speak, it might turn on them as far as people going, well, if they're complaining about that and they're afraid that it's going to hurt their business. So they asked if he would speak on their behalf. I don't know that for a fact. But that's one of the things that crossed my mind, is because the DDA is there to represent businesses. I just hope that everybody can get it together and work it out. Like Mr. Camparoni said, if that's what it is, then make everybody aware that that's what it is. And that's my whole thing. I don't, I'm, my assumption is, were they notified in advance, a reminder that, hey, we haven't done this since 2020, but we now have an ordinance officer? These are the things that are going to be coming forth. It's, it's unfortunate, but everything in this society nowadays, people are, somebody somewhere is complaining about something and coming to officials. So this is, just happens to be another thing, and I think that, I, I don't know how else they could have done it, other than that they should have sent, could something have gone out in advance saying this hasn't been done? And these, just a reminder, this is what's going to be proceed. But I don't even know if that was a possibility. Anyways, all I'm saying is, that was just a thought of mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mojer?
So I agree with what Alex said, we do have the ordinances. They haven't been followed for so many years, and we now are starting to follow these ordinances. They're there for a reason, and, and I understand, you know, Mr. Gibb, I understand why you're here and you are talking on behalf of the DDA, and I do appreciate that. But we have to follow the rules. We haven't followed the rules in 20-plus years. It hasn't been since 2022. It's been over 20 years. There's been no rules followed in this village. And we now have a chief, and we have a manager, and we are attempting to follow the rules. So I, I know it's difficult, I know people want to do whatever they want to do to promote business. I get all that. But I'm a rule follower, and we have to follow the rules. And if there's something that needs to be changed, then we can talk about it and, and we can change it. But, but the businesses that are just blatantly doing whatever they want to do, it's not fair to the other businesses who are following the rules. And I think that we have the ordinances for a reason. That's all.
So the one comment I would make, the, you have to recognize that the, what's happened here is we've had complaints, but, you know, very specific complaints about signs. And I think what has changed is that we have a police chief who is taking those complaints seriously and acting on it, which is what his job is. So it's not like he's out there looking for things to write tickets on. He's, he's doing his job and responding to specific citizens' complaints. So that's, I think that's what's, what triggered this. I can more than buy into, you know, asking the village manager to do the first cut. I have no issue with that. Relative to rule following, I'm a rule follower also, and we've got a rule out there, and that's exactly what the police chief is trying to do. I also recognize that rules, and in this case, ordinances, become obsolete and maybe don't meet the needs of the community anymore. And that's where I think the council comes in, is looking at those and, and making any adjustments so that they are current and they do meet the needs. I think the, the statement that Stan made, that the business owners may not like the output, I think that's quite possible. But that's, you know, that's, that's the way it'll go, right, if we, if we look at it. So I, I can support the motion on, on the floor. If Darwin says that's a, that's a good first step, that's fine with me. And then we'll take it from there. I'm okay with that.
So we have a motion to direct the, the village manager to confer with the DDA director to look at the ordinance, essentially, correct? Yes. Any other final council comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Item 10E, work group session regarding office hours. Correct?
That's okay.
Office hours. Mr. Dandelitas?
I'm just, you know, looking at the meeting minutes from our, our special meeting. That was one of the, that was one of the, I guess the follow-ups was, it was going to be on tonight's agenda to schedule a follow-up meeting. I didn't see it on the agenda, so I thought I'd suggest we add it and schedule our follow-up.
As a special meeting before another council meeting?
Or whenever. It's, I guess that's up to everybody's schedules. I'm not saying when, I just want, I just want to get a date.
If we're asking our village manager to be at that, it would probably be on the September 22nd. Yeah, a work, work session for September 22nd before?
Finally meet.
I'm good with doing it in the regular council meeting. Do we need a special meeting? I mean, why don't you just get together and make an agenda item? Do we need to go into the, the separate meeting?
Well, it's just in, in, we had that discussion in the special meeting, and we agreed that we were going to have another special meeting.
Okay, okay.
Because it allows us to have more open discussion and less rule following, I guess. Right. More open, a more open discussion versus, you know. So I'll make a motion to schedule a work session for 5:30 on September 22nd to discuss office hours and open policies.
Support?
Any other council comments, public comments? All of you, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10F, committee on cityhood. Mr. Mifery, would you like to say, committee on cityhood, just introduce the agenda item?
I think this was a request from Councilmember Lamb.
So after, in the, in our previous meeting, we had discussed, we had a preliminary committee to review the potential for cityhood. The committee determined that there would be a couple of mil cost savings, potential couple of mils cost savings to the residents on their taxes if we were to engage. So I believe that we should continue on and form a committee to make a recommendation, a formal committee pursuant to the statute, to make a recommendation to the village council on whether we should pursue the process of cityhood. And I was thinking that we should- And I was thinking that we should include three council members on the committee, of which I would be happy to volunteer again, and invite some citizens to participate in the committee. I, I don't know at this time if we can specify a certain number of citizens. I would think.
I mean, you certainly can specify a certain number. You would just have to also say how those citizens are to be chosen.
So I, I suggest, we, we, okay, then we'll just say three council members and three citizens and we ask publicly on our website or other means for volunteer. And if we receive more than three, we'll deal with that when we get.
Right, that, we can look at. Could we use a standard, like, committee application like we have for Parks and Rec or something like that, that then we can look at?
Yes.
Okay. Would that suffice?
Yes.
Did I hear a motion to form a committee, a formal committee to investigate cityhood and make a recommendation to the council comprised of three council members and three citizens to be selected after they apply via our normal application process?
I support.
I'd say I'll support also, and I'd like to volunteer.
I think, is there any additional?
I think in your motion, you need to establish a deadline for having the committee come back. It can be six months, but, under the charter, you're only allowed to establish ad hoc committees.
I'll amend that, include the six-month.
So August, September, February? The beginning of February?
Winter.
So.
Yeah.
And then I'll include in the, in the, include myself and George in the motion. Would anyone else want to be on the committee?
I will. If that's not a conflict of interest.
No, we already went through that with Carol.
Well, sorry, just in case there's anybody else who is dying for that, then you can.
I'm not on a committee right now, so.
So the motion then is to form an ad hoc committee until, can we just say February 1st?
Yeah.
Okay. To come back prior to February 1st with a recommendation to the village council on whether or not the village should pursue cityhood comprised of three council members, Mr. Lamb, Mr. Dan Delitis, and Ms. Moser, and three citizens to be chosen by application by the end of August? Or by, when, when would you like the citizens to be chosen?
Soon.
So by the end of August? I guess we'll.
I see two.
That's only a couple of weeks.
That is, okay, by the September 8th meeting.
Yeah.
See two of them over there right now? Maybe three, there could be three right there.
In a row.
But to allow citizens equal opportunity to apply for this, we can say we'll appoint them on the September 8th meeting. Does that sound good for your mo, does that work?
For your mo, yeah, it was a perfect motion.
Okay. You want me to make that motion or you want to make it?
It's fine, you can make, I can make the motion.
And then we had, do we still have support? Yes, we have support from Ms. Moser. Okay, council comments?
So I, in our special meeting, I had, I had suggested that we have somebody from the DDA. And I think specifically I suggested Matt and the comment was made, well, it has to be somebody that's a citizen. I, I believe that the, that there's a DDA input that we need to get. I don't know how we get that if we can't have.
We invite them to the committee meeting. The committee invites the people to come and educate us as we're supposed to be gathering information. I'm sorry, out of order yard, but.
I'll let it slide.
The committee's purpose is to investigate all and obtain all information and discuss all items like in the preliminary report. This will be the time to go to town on it. So we will invite all the affected parties to, to, to come and speak with us. I think that's appropriate. All, if the township people and the fire department people want to come and talk, that would be great. My point was that, that we cannot make commitments on behalf of a future city. We can only discuss possibilities. So this, this is just discussing, you know, some, I'm cool with all that.
When's our next water bill coming out? With the,
September, October.
The fancy,
In September.
Print color stuff on it? Okay. So that might be too late. I guess as long as we post it and just get the word out.
I see our friendly newspaper here present, so perhaps they'll put something in it as well. Any other council comments? Public comment?
I just have a request, and that is if you guys could possibly have reminders to pull your mics in because a lot of times this evening when there was discussion, it was very hard. I know that you have a tendency to turn or talk to one another and then those of us out here cannot. And if we can't hear and we're missing part of the conversation, and I can only imagine that the taped part of this, I'm assuming it's still being taped, those people can't hear it either. So it'd be appreciated if everyone would make an effort to do that. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we have a motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, call to the public. So similar to the beginning of the meeting, is any member of the public like to speak on anything? Yes, Mr. Stevens?
Small notepad. Three notes for tonight. The dog license aspect and being on our website, that's good. But since the paper is here and everybody in the community gets a paper, it'd be nice to have an article in there about dog licensing so that everybody would have access to it. Two, the Clemm's report that we all get a copy of is a very structured report. I think it'd be appropriate if we could have an administrative interpretation and opinion on that report so that laypeople can read that and see if there's a positive change, negative change, and curve of whatever is happening within the police department and citations and things that are taking place. Thirdly, on the Atwater Ballpark, I did some calculations and visitation to the, the existing court. The existing court is 70 by 60, it is 47 by 50, but the bitumen is 67 by 70. So the actual court size is almost the same size as the surrounding area that's paved. So about 50% of what we're paying for is the border. And if you go to the larger one that is in the program, there's approximately 3,100 square feet of border that would be around that court. And that's roughly about 45% of what is the cost of the program. I would suggest that we, in considering this, we just build a court and then the borderline, which would be the out-of-bounds, people aren't dribbling balls on the court out of bounds, they're handling the ball. So why don't we just make the pavement the size of the actual court and then put, well, grass or dirt around the perimeter there? And this should significantly reduce the cost of the court, whether it's a full-size court or a half-court, because you're paying an awful lot for stuff that really doesn't need to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close, call to the public. Item number 12, council comments, Ms. Moser. I know Stan started the other side last time, so.
Well, I always want to thank everybody for coming and we have sort of a lot of people tonight, so that's exciting. I don't really have any, any kind of comment tonight, except that I hope Darwin, you have a wonderful, well-deserved vacation. And I'm envious.
Thank you.
Because one of us doesn't like to travel. Guess who that would be?
Mr. Dan Delitis.
I guess the comment that I would make is to get the word out that we've got an opening up here as of tonight with Mr. Sarowski's resignation. Hopefully we'll get a good list of candidates, folks that are willing to engage, willing to get involved, willing to make the commitment and willing to take the heat. So anyway, I, I look forward to getting a good, a good candidate pool and would encourage anybody and everybody that's got an interest to submit an application, please.
Mr. Ford?
Yeah, I go along with what Mr. Dan Delitis said, to, anybody has interest, come and apply. A comment about our enforcement of ordinances and I, I do appreciate our police chief and all he's doing in that regard. It is important that we enforce what we have. We might get more complaints because of that, but I think we need to take a look at those as they come, but the enforcement still needs to be there. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Camprodi.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank these guys for doing a great job. I don't like laws, don't like rules, don't hardly like to follow them. But it sure is nice when somebody else does it for them. And I'm, Mary spoke earlier and I kind of would like some information on this also, the update and review of publicly owned parcels and right away, the inventory project. I kind of like to see where that's going and what's kind of going to be expected out of that. I really would, I need more information on that also because it's just kind of been up in the air and we've approved money to do these studies and all that kind of stuff. I would just really like to know what's going on with that. I don't, I guess that's about all I really have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
I want to thank everybody for coming. I'm hoping that some of you volunteer to be on the committees. I've been really happy with the results of our committee work this last year. We've done a lot of good things for the community. You know, can we have a combination pickleball basketball court, you know? I'm at that age, maybe pickleball would be better. And I'm not, you know. Right, Stan, one-on-one, me and you? No, that never happened.
What, I need a date.
Never happened. Anyway, I'd like to, yeah, thank you all for coming and please volunteer for the Cityhood Committee. It's really important that we start focusing on the citizens' needs and on the proper taxation of the village. It's estimated in the next few years, we'll get up to 1,000 new residents. We have 3,000 residents. That's a 25% population increase. That means we're going to need, and most of it's going to be on the other side of the highway. It's going to, there's going to be problems associated with that. And then the sewer projects and the water projects, all the free money isn't coming. We're not getting free money. We pay a lot of taxes, property values are at all-time high in the village. It, it's time to start looking at how to redistribute the tax dollars to effectively accommodate the needs of the taxpaying property owners. So that's my mission to the end, is to use your money in your best interest.
Thank you. Two comments, I think, for me. Thank you for the enforcing of the crossing on the M-24. I've been seeing it more and more as well. The crosswalks are not far, so for the public listening, it's, you can see them both directions. They are not far. Please don't play, what, what's that old game, is it Frogger? Across the street, please don't do that. Use the crosswalks, they're there for a reason. We want to keep you safe, we want to keep drivers safe. And we love that you, you want to go about and do different things, but yes, please use the crosswalks for everybody's safety. And then also the Atwater Basketball Court, just, you know, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I did watch the meeting and was also surprised a little bit by kind of how the scope seemed to change from what the Parks and Rec Committee requested in terms of size and everything. And part of me thinks, can't DPW just yank out some asphalt and we can get a concrete mixer and we can just start mixing concrete and pouring it in? You know, I can, I can grab a tamper and start tamping down, you know, the base, but it'd certainly be cheaper than a very engineered basketball court. So I just, part of me, you know, I don't know if there are requirements that we have at super-engineered and everything, but it just, I was a little bit shell-shocked of like, well, it's bigger than what we thought, what, you know, what the Parks, because I was on the Parks Committee for a while. And so, bigger than I think what was requested. And yeah, it feels like it can be done, you know, with a contractor for significantly reduced costs than $84,000. It just seems kind of silly to have that much asphalt or concrete for that much money. So I'll go out there with a sledgehammer and start smashing the court, I guess, in a wheelbarrow and dump it in the DPW yard. They won't like that very much. But yes, very much want this project to be done. It's been on the list for many, many years. So looking forward to an updated recommendation for that court. Again, the Parks and Rec Committee has all the notes. You know, I saw committee member Kristi Garbasik up there, you know, giving the numbers, giving the size, giving the dimensions. So yeah, I just want to make sure all of that is communicated and put accurately in the next, the next time it comes to council so we can get that done. Other than that, it's hot for a few more days and I think I'm seeing a cooldown maybe in a week from now. So don't melt out there, eat all the ice cream, watch out for one another. Continue to do so, it's been, it's been really warm. And continue to enjoy outside summer on the water when you can. So for that, Mr. McCleary.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I do want to address Ms. Byers' comments about the village property inventory project. The, the document that was handed out was the January update from our planning and zoning firm regarding this project. And in that document, it outlines the next steps in the process. We had, they had done some preliminary work toward this project and in this document, they were outlining what the next steps were. And so the next steps in this project included doing comprehensive field inspections and documenting the conditions for all village-owned properties. But the list that was included in this document, including Long Point, what the planners did was they identified five specific properties that they would use as test cases to go out and inspect those, determine what the conditions are there so that they had some idea of what they were going to be experiencing as they went out and looked at all the village properties. So that's, that's why Long Point was pointed out in particular, but we're not just focusing on Long Point as village properties throughout the entire village.
You're saying that Long Point is village-owned property across the street? Is that what you're saying, Darwin?
I'm sorry?
You're saying that's village-owned property across the road? Is that what you're indicating to me, that that's village-owned property on Long Point? That is village-owned property on Long Point, you're telling me?
They're saying the, yes, they're saying the village, nearby village-owned parcel and then they give the parcel number.
That's the field. That's not Long Point. That's, that's the, that's the common lands.
Okay. So we will be.
I'll discuss with you, I, I would like a little bit more to hear.
This is a process and we will be, I'm sorry, Your Honor, I should be addressing you.
I'll put it into the microphone.
But, but I hear, I hear Ms. Byers' concerns. And, and I do want to note, this is a process. There are many steps in this process. There will be opportunities for the public once we have the inventory completed. We have the, any improvements, unauthorized improvements on those properties documented. This will be a report that will come back to council. We will post this information on our website. We will be inviting residents to come out and comment on the results of our inventory. So, so residents will have an opportunity. And actually, our, our consultants recommended that we actually hold a public hearing on the results of our study. So, so we will be following that process. There will be opportunity for the public to have input before any decisions are made by council as to how we proceed on the study and on each of our village properties. So I want to reassure the public that, that they will have an opportunity to have input. Your Honor, you've received the village manager's report tonight. I provided you with information on the disposal of the 1997 GMC dump truck that was authorized for sale back in October 2021. 2021. We did dispose of that dump truck. Assessing services through the township have been transferred from Oakland County Equalization to a private firm, and so, those services are now being, now being handled by that private firm. Assessor Mitch Elrod is in the office at Orient Township on Wednesdays and Fridays, but Oakland County Equalization will no longer be providing assessing services to the township or the village. I provided you with an update on the audit process, I provided you with some information on the health, employee health insurance hard cap limits. We have run into a situation during open enrollment where due to some employees' selections of alternative health insurance options, we are now exceeding the hard cap limit. The village has been following the hard cap limit, there are two other options, we can institute an 8%, 20% option, which the village would pay 80% of insurance premiums, employees would pay 20% of insurance premiums, or the council with a supermajority vote could opt out of those limits altogether, with the village paying the full cost. My assumption is, at this point, is that we are going to continue to comply with the hard cap limits. Administration is, has put those 12 employees on notice of the impact that it has on them, the contributions that they would need to start making to their health insurance premiums. We're hoping that some of our employees choose to move into another program that would bring us below the hard cap limits, but they always have the option of staying with what they want. If they do, they will have to contribute, and if the council takes no action on this, the hard cap limits will continue for the upcoming year. You're not required to take any action on that. You're only required to take action by simple majority vote if you want to go to 80/20, or a supermajority vote if you want to opt out altogether. So, Wes will be bringing something back to council at your next meeting after we've gotten some additional input from the 12 employees who are impacted by this.
Can I ask a question? So, this is going to come back, as you said, on August 25th. Would you include in whatever comes back what those options are, what the, what options the employees have? So, I think you said that the employees have the option to stay with what they've got or to move to a plan that is less expensive and within those hard caps. So, I'd like, I, I would appreciate seeing what those options are as, as we have that discussion.
So, so you, Wes will provide you with the analysis sheet that was prepared by our consultant that provides the three health insurance options that they have, and, and it actually shows the hard cap limits and what the actual costs are, so Wes can include that information with-
That'd be great, thank you.
-with the next meeting.
Darwin, what, just ask a quick thing, what set us over the limit? What changed?
The number of employees who opted into the most expensive program, which is the PPO program, is what brought us about 10% over the hard cap limit. Now, if they chose one of the other programs, there's a, there's a point-of-service program that is almost identical to the PPO, from what I understand, that is less expensive that they could opt into. There's also an HMO program that-
So, the, the very best plan, we were paying 100% of the premiums for the employees who participated, and I understand we had-
You have then because we've been under the hard cap limits.
Yeah, and I understand we had numerous employees that were opting out of our health insurance because of spousal coverage.
Correct.
Right? So, now we have more employees opting in?
I don't, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, since this is just a manager's report, and we'll have this discussion on August 25th.
Yeah, Wes is telling me he would be happy to explain it to you at the next meeting. If you do have questions while I'm still here, give me a call, I'm happy to talk to you in more detail.
You got international roaming?
I do.
Good, you admitted it.
Don't answer the phone.
I will, I will call you.
Your Honor, I've also provided to you an update on the Paint Creek Ridge subdivision Storm sewer access agreement that has been fully executed between the village and the Wes and I will be meeting with the contractor tomorrow to discuss the possibility of a design-build contract for the removal of the steeple from this building and the roof repairs that need to be done, so Wes, I'm sure will provide an update to you at your next meeting on those discussions. Sidewalk repair project, we are going through the punch list items. There was some work that was authorized by the Public Works Director that was over and above the original contract. I know a couple handicap ramps that were inadvertently excluded from the contract that we added in because we received such good costs on this contract, but some of the other things are questionable, and we're reviewing those in detail. I noted for you that we're meeting later this week with the attorney and engineers to continue our work on preparing ordinance revisions, proposed ordinance revisions, to bring our ordinances into conformance with the new engineering, design, and construction standards, so that meeting will be later this week, and I'm hoping that once we get, get through that process, the attorney can draft the necessary ordinance amendments, and I'm hoping that comes back to you in October. The ordinance recodification project, we have received the proofs for the codification, it is a, it's basically our whole code of ordinances, it's about 500 pages, if I remember correctly. We are going through that to review it and make any corrections, and then that will go back to Muni Code and to the village attorney for additional work before they finalize the proposed code. And I noted for you my absence coming up, and some important upcoming dates, important dates. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, I'll support, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.